I call the pre-meeting conference to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Coswell.
Here.
DePena. Here. Graziano.
Here.
Nattori.
Here.
Rogel.
Here.
Trumalberg. President, Mayor Melham.
Here. I don't know if you want to receive, uh... No, let's, let's do it at the end. Do it at the end? I'll, I'll, I only need a couple of minutes. I'll have... Yeah, brother. Let me really... Okay. Do this first, right, then we'll go closer. Calthis, who is this man?
Here.
Uh, received Belville Recreation and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council over here.
Yes.
So, uh, thank you for attending. I know it was kind of on short notice. As you have three new council members, including myself, we're just going to be going through a bunch of different committees, commissions, organizations, just because we're asked to perform reappointments, and we kind of want to get our hands around what each one does. Granted, we don't have a lot of time, and I apologize for that. Uh, we do have some other items on for discussion. Uh, but one of the main important things that we want to get to the bottom of is we've had a lot of requests in the last couple of weeks for flag raisings, and I know that this council, uh, basically has approved those in the past that found them correct.
Agreed.
Uh, and I guess what we want to know is there any formal procedures or an applica... Like, how do we, when we get asked, and we get letters all the time for flag raisings specifically, uh, and I'm asking that now because we actually have a couple of requests in. Is there any formal process that you go through that bet goes?
Tommy Gromm, he takes care of all the flag raising.
Uh, do we need a name count, or not?
Uh, yes. This is true. I'm deputy chair. Tommy Gromm is the chairman, he's at the board of education meeting on that. Now, all the flag raising, Tommy has done with, uh, before, you know, every week, including that. He just told us when there was a flag raising for certain people, and that was it.
We, I, I can basically...
Sure. Just, I don't know if we have any formally, but just take your name as...
Okay, separate people. Um, basically what we do is we meet once a month, except in the summer, and we discuss and suggest various different activities for recreation, different cultural affairs, and we have a liaison to the county mayor council, which is, uh, Councilwoman Burke at this time, and what we discuss or what we'd like to plan, she brings back to the council and the mayor council. And so far, and like, uh, James said, Tom Gromm handles all the flag raisings, we, the flag raisings, we really aren't involved in that. Uh, he tells us what it is and what's going to be done, and, you know, it seems okay.
So, who organized the meetings? Who notified the members?
He does, Tom Gromm.
Okay. Cause I, we're, when we had a look through the existing membership, uh, for reappointments, uh, there were members on there that I believe were never notified, so that's why we're just trying to get our hands around.
Everyone got letters, but they don't, a lot don't show up. I, they don't show up.
I, I think Mr. Graziano is a member.
Yes, he is, he is.
I don't think, I don't think he ever got the letter.
Um, well, the letters have gone out, and I always receive a letter.
I'm just asking what the process is.
I, I, I can't say they're not certified or registered, but I always receive my letter.
So, there is a process?
Yes, there is a process. And some of the, uh, previous suggestions were cherry blossom festival, which was denied. Uh, new sign board at the rec house for notifications of events coming up and scores for the teams, denied.
Now, when you say denied, that was denied by...
By the mayor and council, I guess.
Okay.
You know, we were presented, and then that didn't go through. Um, we also wanted to raise funds for the sign board to help not that the town should pay for it, but that, they said we were not able to do that either, it wasn't legal, so that was fine. Uh, sporting events and activities such as, uh, softball pitching, coaches, maybe girls from the high school that would volunteer to teach our young, you know, uh, young ladies and men to pitch better and have better softball and baseball teams. We never got anything back on that. Uh, we also suggested that the Christmas tree lighting have maybe other cultures of ha, from other countries on how they do things at Christmas time or their religious, uh, celebrations, and we didn't get back anything on that. And, uh, we also mentioned briefly a dog park, maybe somewhere on Dead End in Belville, but nothing back on that. And then the other thing we wanted to mention, I'll try to make it quick, was, um, we really were never notified or included in on any of the activities such as the Halloween parade, the Christmas tree lighting, or even the Easter egg hunts. We were notified with the rest of the town, and, uh, we decided to participate, whoever was available, I mean, John, Kate, Maria, myself, even donated, uh, Christmas, uh, not Christmas, uh, Easter items for the children, and we would have a table and hand them out, but we were never, nothing was ever discussed with us from, with the heads of the rec department and, um, for cultural affairs, I guess it's us, and we just participated as residents, and we just happened to be on the board, and, you know, we, but we were never told of any times or what they were going to do, or we just showed up and participated. And that's basically, that's basically what I have as far as, but we do meet and we discuss everything every month, but nothing, uh, it's really a suggestion...
Where, where do you meet?
At the rec house. And it's about an hour, and we discuss and suggest. We have no powers to vote on anything, to plan anything. It is always presented by the liaison from the council to the mayor and council to see if it's approved or if they think it's a good idea.
So, just so you know, there's, there's a new item on the agenda today which we're going to get to, is, uh, report of the mayor. We're going to eventually expand that to, there's a report of the manager, there's going to be a report of the mayor, and also a report of the council committee liaison. Uh, we haven't really designated those yet.
Right.
So, in the near future, as we appoint various council members to different committees, like, uh, Councilwoman Burke, she would then be able to effectively communicate that stuff. But again, we're just trying to get our hands around how things are being run, because there's, since we have difference between some committees, there's, there's committees, there's commissions, there's all kinds of different things out there, and we're just trying to wrap our hands around it. Uh, so I do, unfortunately, we're a little pressed for time, but I do thank you for coming very informative. I do want to give the council a quick opportunity, only for time reasons, if you have a specific question maybe, um, if not, we'll, we'll move on to the next item.
Good. No, I think all those ideas are actually very good, and I'd like to explore them, uh, however, not that, you know, we choose to explore that, I think that's great, but has any power to present it to us, or will it be decided? I think those are some very good ideas.
Because we're willing to donate our time. We even donate monies, and we buy our own, I bring to the Easter egg hunts and different things to, you know, to give out to the children as a donation, just to have, but we were never really included.
Sure.
Just, I guess, suggestions we had and ideas, but nothing ever really...
I think we're going to make a commitment to do a better job communicating, you know...
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I've been involved with forty years with the sports and recreation, and my big thing is I've seen good times and bad times in Belville as far as sports. Right now, we're in a rut, and it's never been like this. Our kids, you know, and most of them come from broken homes, and there's don't, really no money for kids to go to any kind of private stuff. My thing was to open up clinics, to teach kids, special girls, to pitch underhand. Boys, how to throw. You get to the baseball field, these kids are throwing a ball, nobody knows anything. And our kids can't afford forty dollars, forty-five dollars for a half hour. So, if the rec could pick this up, and we can open up clinics at our friendly house, girls have one night, boys have one night, all the sports, we'll put Belville back on a match. That's how your town is known, through sports, uh, schools, taxes. You're either a criminal town like Newark where everybody knows Newark, or you can become a big town like Belville used to be, and we can be again.
Sure. That's what I meant. Thank you for your time.
No, you're right.
You're right.
We used to do clinics at one time, and we stopped doing it, and John, you know, John remembers that, and that's a big part of building a farm.
We used to open the friendly house all the time, like, before the season started, and they gave them time to practice in the friendly house. And I did that for a while, but then after I left, I don't remember.
Yeah, well, then the friendly house went to, yeah, the rec, and we won't even talk about that, but now we should start again.
Yeah. Or big thing, we need a recreation building that's worthy of Belville. Well, I, I've been, like I say, forty years I've been running around, and all the towns we go to, you, you come back, you're sick, and you see what we have in a recreation building compared to what they have.
Anything else, anybody? Thank you so much. We're going to move on to, uh, the next item of discussion is the news rack ordinance. So, the council would, uh, probably found in their packets an example of our existing news rack ordinance, and, uh, an example of something that we may be considering proposing in the future. Uh, most of the council was represented, uh, as much as, keep in mind, this is kind of a work session, so as much as I'm talking to the council, I'm, I'm trying to incorporate the audience as well. Uh, most of the council was, uh, available for Washington Avenue walk last Saturday. Uh, we identified a couple key issues that we're already trying to address, uh, we've already made some great improvements on Washington Avenue, uh, we've started some, some great, uh, we've got some procedures in place to clean it, cutting down some of their trees and bunch. One thing that we did happen to notice was, uh, how the news racks make our township look, how it makes Washington Avenue look. Um, because news racks are part of the media, they are protected by First Amendment, uh, so we can't just make a, a ban on them and get rid of them, but we can further restrict them, or we could...
And how it works.
Right, and we can enforce it. We do have a pretty restrictive ordinance, uh, the, I read through the existing ordinance that we have, I would probably argue that if we just enforced that, we would probably be able to clean it up. Uh, as most of you know, I work in about nineteen other municipalities, and Lenhurst has a pretty good ordinance, uh, which I asked for a copy of, which is in your packet. So, again, it was just something to start a conversation, um, I hope that we will all be able to review it, and maybe put on an agenda for a first reading, either to amend our existing ordinance, uh, sometime in the future, or to just abolish it, or like something new. Uh, but again, the overall thought on that was let us review it, uh, let us ask any questions if we have them, uh, put it on for maybe a further discussion and on for first reading, if we still have time to do that. Um, if there's no specific questions, anybody have any specific questions on that? No?
No, I just think, like, a hundred percent right, I mean, walking Washington Avenue, uh, they're not kept, there's graffiti all over them, and we need to contain that.
And again, I, I argue that if you read our existing ordinance, there's actual provisions in there to do that, but we're going to look to merge, merge it together. Uh, no more questions on that, I have another item up for discussion. Uh, in speaking with what you were recommending about some increased activities and cultural fairs and just different events, uh, that's something that we're kind of committed to here. Uh, so that being said, we are interested in potentially holding a Belville's first ever five K, uh, we're kind of in discussions, I'm in discussions with a couple of different veterans organizations, uh, we've gotten to a couple of them, we'll get to the rest of them in the future, uh, and the thinking is just to raise funds for that. So, if we do something on Veterans Day, uh, which would be maybe a five K run that starts at the memorial, looks back around and comes back, uh, we could probably do that. Uh, I'm su, I'm actually certain that we could pull that off, and any of the funds that we generated would go towards our veterans organizations, if not, the veterans council as a whole. Uh, so again, to your point, that there's different activities we can be doing, uh, you go to other townships, they have these events, they have these activities, it's something that I'm committed to doing, and I'm almost certain that we have consensus that the other township could do that.
Absolutely.
Um, I do believe that we have to provide some more events and higher quality events for our residents, uh, it's something that we're committed to do. Uh, we took a shot with the Fourth of July, uh, that was something that kind of came out of the left field, uh, we got our packet on the Friday before we were sworn in, we happened to notice that three days before the Fourth of July, which would be July first, uh, we were still approving the contract, and we had asked the town manager to call up the company to see if we could increase the budget a little bit, we had a consensus of council, we all agreed, township manager moved forward, and we got rave reviews for that. Um, I'm committed, I, I really believe that our residents, uh, taxes aren't cheap here, and we could, I never promised anybody that we were going to reduce taxes, but I promised people that we would give them events and services that match proportionally what they're paying taxes, and we're going to try and do that. Uh, so that being said, increased ev, events and activities is something that we're committed to providing, I think that would be a good, uh, a good start. Uh, I have more to say on some of these things in my mayor's report, uh, but that was really hit on that. Do you have any specific questions on that? Uh, at this time, unfortunately, I know that most of you are here and seated, uh...
Need a motion on that?
Just our manager, do you still need time for private session? I need a very brief, uh, private session. Yes. Okay. So, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter for private session. Motion, uh, second. Motion made at second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Coswell. DePena. Graziano. Nattori. Rogel. Gromm. Gromm. Yes.
Yes. To the benefit of those here, unfortunately, we do have to clear the room while we discuss. The reason for executive session is to discuss matter of, uh, litigation.
Oh, come on.
Call the rally, there be an order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Coswell.
Here.
DePena. Here. Graziano.
Here.
Nattori.
Here.
Rogel.
Here.
Trumalberg. President, Mayor Melham.
Here. Let's leave.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our notice of this meeting has been with the press and public, in accordance with the open public meeting floor. Presentations you just now hearing will be, uh, the council meeting of August fourteenth. Remove that, it's regular meeting of April tenth.
Remove both at the same time?
Yeah. Remove both at the same time.
Second. Um, motion made at second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Coswell.
Yes.
DePena. Graziano.
Abstain.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rogel.
Yes.
Trumalberg. Abstain. Mayor Melham.
Abstain.
Report him out.
Report him out.
Yes, my first item this evening, uh, concerns the Second River, uh, joint meeting, which is, uh, similar agency of State Valley Sewage Commission. We have been assessed a portion of, uh, added assessment of thirty-three thousand one sixty-one ninety-two, of which Belville, of which Belville's portion is two thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, also, this morning was the first day, uh, that we deployed our, uh, our old time sweeping cart back on Washington Avenue. For those of you who are old enough, it's like the, uh, the end of the Rocky and Bo Winkle show, where they go down the street and just clean up. So, we have one that's out, and we will be ordering another one, uh, to put two out in several days a week. Um, our two thousand seventeen, the end of our two thousand seventeen and the beginning of our two thousand eighteen road program, I am told will begin the end of July, they have already started, uh, some minor concrete work and some repairs and injecting sewer lines and water lines. Uh, we have also responded to Division of Local Government Services relative to the two thousand eighteen budget, which should be finalized, but then, uh, voted on at the August meeting. Uh, next item is our movie night and car show will be Tuesday, August seventh, from six to eight, uh, with the movies starting at eight fifteen. Uh, we will have another community shred day, September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, from nine AM to one PM. Uh, we are going to have, I guess it's our second annual garage slash yard sale on Saturday, September twenty-nine, uh, September twenty-ninth and Sunday, September thirtieth, and that will run from eight AM to five PM. Uh, on the bill list this evening, this is more for the mayor and council, uh, those who are watching the bill list, uh, we had two late starters that were put on here due to administrative error, and they relate to the, uh, the renewal that is going on, and those two bills, uh, total three hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. I'm also happy to report that the Belville Police Department, I believe Chief McKeen is with us again this evening, as he always is. Uh, we deployed, uh, our bicycle patrols, two officers who will be, uh, patrolling the business areas, Franklin Avenue, Franklin Street, Washington Avenue, uh, and every other business area that they can cover for us from nine to five, um, pretty much every day. Uh, on July ninth, on Montgomery Street, we had a six inch water main break, uh, we replaced ten, we replaced ten foot of pipe, uh, in one service, one home service. Um, on July tenth, on Valley Street, we had a water main break, and, uh, it was a six inch main that was repaired, and today on Mill and Main, we had a water main break and we replaced eight foot of eight inch water main. That's all.
And your manager?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
I, um, I know we have a, this paving starting at the end of July, and I guess what kind of gets me is, in the past, at least the last couple of years, we've started later and later, and I, I was just wondering if, if in our next contracts, we can make sure there's a start date somewhere in the April, May timeframe, some milestones to be met, uh, so that we don't get stuck in this again. I know, like, Burris and, and Fairview being another, we, we could take a look, and, and these people are suffering out there, and some of these streets are absolutely horrible.
Councilman, I couldn't agree more. If you recall, we went out to bid, I believe it was February.
Yeah.
Just to avoid this, but unfortunately, the contractor that was awarded the bid, uh, had other bids, uh, that were before us, but we need to put a time, uh, timeline in there for when they start and in fact, when they finish, which I believe is a hundred and twenty days. So, they should be done September, right around September, the latest, uh, beginning of October. But I couldn't agree with you more, I was not happy with the schedule, but unfortunately, it was something that was beyond my control, so we need to tighten up our specifications when we went to bid.
Understood.
I was paid a visit today by our two, uh, patrolmen, Reyes and La Soho, and I was very pleasantly surprised, and it was wonderful having them there, and I commend our chief and our deputy chief for doing that. I also would like some dogs every once in a while, too. I know, Mo is here for that. I know, Mo is here for that, but I think that would help him. Thank you.
Yeah, Ma, what, um, what Steve said, I, I agree with him, because last year I mentioned this, uh, in the contract, if we can have some type of a timeframe, because of the politics last year we had on Beach Street, do you remember, they just disappeared, and they said, well, we're on vacation, and they were gone for weeks, and, uh, Beach Street was done, it was done, but it was done a year later, so we de, uh, we definitely need a timeframe, and we hired these contractors to do this street.
Yes, sir. Councilman, there is a timeframe in there for total job completion? What we need to tighten up is that story.
Partic, especially, I mean, it was, uh, chaotic last year with Beach Street, they did. Also, with the, uh, townwide garage sale, it's our third annual one, or not, I think, garage, yards, and, uh, yes. Um, and, uh, it, it has grown, first year we did very well, last year we really had a lot of people, and I hope this year we have even more, that's the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, and where did they register, the manager's office, please?
Uh, finance.
Fi, fi, finance, I believe, yeah. Also, while we did talk about this a while ago, and we met, but we really didn't get this going, and I really do want to get this going after I saw, I guess it was in June, I saw the production of Shrek that we're, uh, that had been, I guess, recreation department puts on for the kids, the kids actually perform from, what is it, first grade?
Third grade through high school.
Third grade through high school, it was a great production, I don't like the show, the show Shrek at all. Production was really very, very good. So, this is something I really want to see get off the ground, putting on a show is a lot, a lot of work. I was involved in it in my early life, and, uh, it takes a lot of time and a lot of work. I'll tell you the truth, I know how to go about it, but I don't know how to go about it, because I've been out of it for so many years. We need leadership on this, I know you have a very good director, we need to know the budget on this, but I think this is something we really have to do under the recreation department, because I think sports are great, but there's a lot of kids that want more than sports than on interest sports, and I think this is really great for the kids. Um, earlier tonight, when we had the, when I talked about the recreation or the cultural affairs committee, they also need to get involved in this with, um, ushering and selling tickets, whatever, but we need the, um, artistic, uh, leadership on this. We did meet with some members of your team, they were excellent, but we need to go further with this, you know, I have the consensus and the support of the, uh, council on this, but we've got, we really have to get this going, um, and it's going to take a while to get this off the ground.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can set something up with the production company, uh, the director, the producer, the musical person, the choreographer, and all those folks, if we can sit down and have a conversation and talk about the times and market rates that, uh...
And, and, and through our conversations, you've made money on all these productions.
We are now making money.
Yes.
Yeah, and one last thing about the paving, Ma.
Yes.
Uh, if possible, uh, we talked about closing up the dates, but is there anything that we can put in there for a penalty, for like an SLA, if not meeting a date?
Yes.
Okay.
The problem when you do a penalty is usually you have to do an incentive, so you've got to be very careful how you frame that.
Yeah, I agree, but at least look into it.
Yeah. No, no, we, we look into it, that's, that was, that was a challenge, honestly. Not only do you have to, if you're going to penalize it, you have to incentivize it.
Understood.
So, good with the bad.
Well, I, I would love to be in a position where we have to give them a incentive because they finished the penalty.
Yeah, yeah.
There'll be so much of a culture change. Somebody else?
Yeah, uh, real quick, just through the manager, just want to thank, uh, our departments of Public Works and Recreation for doing a great job at the fireworks, um, that was a smash it, uh, nothing but great review, so thank you very much, and also the manager's office and the council, um, did our part, Joe. Uh, also, August, uh, seventh is, uh, National Night Out also, so, uh, I want to see if anyone here wants to come and do a block party, even do peoples a party, so, anyone that wants to do it, just register with the clerk's office, and, uh, we'll come and pay you a visit and talk to you and bring the police with us and, uh, discuss some neighborhood safety stuff, and bring some brains around, so, that's August seventh.
Anybody else? No, this is the report of the mayor. Most of, uh, tomorrow's comments, including the, uh, council's comments after the fact, I've covered most of the things I wanted to cover in my mayor's report. Uh, the first item, though, real quick, I'm going to blow through a couple of different items. Uh, tonight is a, uh, our second meeting since we've been sworn in on July first, and it's our second time live streaming the meeting. Uh, it's not perfect yet, we're going to get better microphones, uh, so much so for the viewing audience here, but also the viewing audience online, too. Uh, so today we are live streaming, uh, we plan on live streaming all of our meetings, uh, eventually they will be actually placed live on our, on our township website, uh, as of now, they're on Facebook. Uh, the manager mentioned earlier that we had community bike, uh, patrols starting this, uh, starting today as a matter of fact, something that was discussed when the council walked Washington Avenue, uh, we discussed two things, bike patrols, which happened today, and even getting, uh, members of our DPW on Washington Avenue with pushcart, cleaning up some of the litter, that also started today. Uh, so I thank, uh, the manager for his leadership in that, Police Department, DPW for that. Um, real quick, I know, uh, Councilman Coswell just touched on it, uh, August seventh, National Night Out, we are seeking some families for some block parties, uh, Naomi and I, uh, Councilwoman DePena and I, had the opportunity to visit a block party this weekend, it was, it was great, uh, something that we're committed to, uh, community policing backs that up as well. Uh, so again, August seventh, National Night Out, on that same day, the township is doing a movie night, uh, and a classic car show at the high school, and if you want to stay in, in your neighborhood and get your neighbors together for a block party, uh, please feel free to do so. Uh, we have started planning just a party, uh, myself and Councilwoman Burke have met twice already on that with members of Mr. Tucci's office, um, we are looking to increase that the same exact way we, we increased the fireworks this past July, and we are having a headline band, uh, and this year for the first time, we're having a, a Latin band also, uh, for some, uh, Orangeline Salsa, I know that Councilwoman likes, um, so that's going to be an upgrade thi, this year. Uh, and so every event that we usually do, we're going to try and make it a little better, and we're also going to be trying to add some more events throughout the year. It was mentioned we are having a community shred day on Saturday, September fifteenth, uh, at the senior center, and also a garage yard sale on two days, Saturday and Sunday,[1794.14] And also a garage yard sale on two days, Saturday and Sunday, on September twenty ninth and thirtieth. Uh, future projects that we have coming up, we are looking at a Belville Restaurant Week for either October or November. That'll be organized and promoted heavily, uh, for our local businesses and just trying to promote some local, local growth there on our avenues. Uh, and our main, we have some great restaurants in Belville. We're gonna start promoting them. Lastly, I know a couple of council people mentioned it, uh, street projects are starting in July. And, uh, I'll save Mr. Frank Tantoni the time of discussing this for public participation. But we are gonna make sure that we have all the infrastructure in place before we start paving streets. Uh, something that I've heard for years here, uh, and I've seen done incorrectly in the past. Uh, I know one of the first streets to be paved is gonna be Belmore, uh, which is gonna be, if you've been on that dead end portion from Greylock. I guess that'll be north to Nutley. Uh, there's no sidewalks, there's no curbing, there's nothing there. Uh, but we're gonna make sure that engineering has cleared that, so PSCG's not gonna be digging it up. We're not gonna be digging it up, uh, that we actually have our ducks in the hole before we go forward with that. Uh, we've been waiting for a while for a lot of these streets. Uh, other than that, we are looking forward to, uh, increase some, what I call, increase customer service. So making town hall more accessible in many ways. One of the ways that you could expect is we're gonna have certain departments, and I'm not allowed to say right now, but certain departments open for late hours. Uh, so just to make it more convenient for our residents to get here, uh, even open to the consideration of even early hours as well. Uh, so we're gonna just try and make town hall more accessible to you, the general public, and anybody trying to do business from town hall. Uh, other than that, that basically concludes my report of the mayor. As I mentioned, uh, when we first started. This right now is a new item on the agenda. It's called Report of the Mayor. As we designate and delegate council committees, uh, you'll also at this point hear from the various council people in giving a report of their respective committees. That being said, I am done with my mayor's report. We'll move on to communications.
Communications area request received from Grace Batters Church for permission to conduct a block party on August twenty fifth from one to five.
Need a motion?
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
D, request received from Nutley, Belville, Wednesday, three, committee for permission to conduct a monthly decree on Sunday, October seventh.
Motion.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
C, request received from the residents of Pepper Street for permission to conduct a block party on Sunday, August nineteenth.
Motion, uh, motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
D, request received from the residents of Famine Home Place for permission to conduct a block party on Tuesday, August seventh.
Need a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
D, letter of resignation received from George Smith, member of the zoning board.
Need a motion. Need a motion made in second, third caller roll.
Yes, and a letter of residence due from C and B.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Melon, I'm sorry.
Taking resumes for clerk.
Answer the next.
Answer the next.
Ordances for introduction. Orders for members by general ordinances of the township of Belville. Chapter eight dash sixteen, eleven handicap parking spaces.
Move right to that.
Second.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Motion to open public participations.
Second.
Motion made in second, third caller roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strobelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Public participation is gonna be limited to five minutes per resident. When you are acknowledged, please stand and state your name and address for the record, please. Respectively.
Phil is Frank Tantoni, one twenty-nine, now prospective now. First, I want to thank you and Chief McKeen for the bicycle patrols coming back. That was my baby years ago, getting them bikes into this town and then they rode them for a while and they didn't. And I'm very grateful that they are back and hope they continue. I wanted to ask, I had asked the previous council members that were up there. Washington Avenue Shop, right. Very dangerous over there. Somebody's gonna get killed. In Nutley and also in Belville, there is one on Greylock Parkway near School Five, too. There's a light that's solar powered and you just have to push the button to cross the street. I don't know if you can contact the state or do something, that maybe we can get something over there for when pedestrians try to cross the street. I've seen many people try to run across older people with pains and want, if somebody's gonna get killed. And maybe we can do something to get that type of light there where you don't need any kind of, uh, electrical, anything. It's all solar powered. I think that, um, Mr. Tucci knows about those because they happen in, in Nutley. So I would appreciate it if you could look into that and maybe we can do something to implement a, a light like that over there. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I have that, if you want.
I'm sorry.
I have it. That, uh, Mr. Frank Tantoni just answered a question. Something that we're aware of. Uh, I've actually requested a very similar light across from, uh, Franklin Avenue across from Chandelier. We've had, uh, several people killed in that intersection. That is a county road, Washington Avenue's a state road. But we do have several, uh, we've already actually asked our police department to prepare an engineering stuff, I'm sorry, traffic study for that district. Uh, because it's a county road, it's a little, little easier. It's not a four lane highway like Washington Avenue. Uh, but we are already in the process of doing that. We also, it's gonna mirror the same exact crosswalk that we have on Bellville Avenue by the park. And on Union Avenue by, uh, Members Funeral Home and Auteur's Pizza. They are solar powered. You're absolutely correct. You hit the button, they flash on both sides. It's a painted crosswalk. Uh, we do think that that will avoid some, some issues in the future and as we're all aware. We've had numerous people already killed on, on, uh, Chandel- at the Chandelier intersection there. Uh, so we're already, that's, that first traffic study has already been done. And we'll, we'll ask the police department for feasibility on, uh, Washington State Highway. Might be a little different. Uh, did you have anything to add, Mr. Tucci?
We did in fact refer this, uh, to Tom Harris, who, uh, I need to double check with him. But I believe, I believe there was a question satisfying the warrants, uh, that the state required, but I will double check and report back.
Anybody else?
Lisa Kistner, three Smith Street, Belville. Uh, first of all, I want to say, I want to commend you all for walking Washington Avenue. I looked at all the pictures on Facebook. It looks fantastic. I applaud you for taking the leadership on this and moving our town and hopefully we can start looking into a better Belville. But now I have a complaint. For a number of months, actually, I want to say since the month of March. Uh, a person came around the corner on Union Terrace. I'm located on Smith Street in the corner of Union Terrace. Uh, it must have happened sometime in either the very late evening or early morning. Someone came around the corner and took out the entire fire hydrant. That's along Union Terrace. The very next morning, I did contact the Belville Police Department and the Fire Department. They told us to call town hall and speak to them and let them know that the fire hydrant was missing. I've made numerous phone calls. My son has made numerous phone calls. Alls we keep getting is that the fire hydrant is ordered. I don't know how long it takes to have a fire hydrant ordered, but we're talking March and now it's July. I have a hole about this size on the side of my property that unfortunately somebody's gonna end up getting hurt. I try to cover it as much as I can with a rock, but i- it's dangerous. And not for nothing, there's supposed to be a fire hydrant there. My insurance on my house says there's supposed to be a fire hydrant there. So I'm starting to become a little concerned. I'm starting to get a little aggravated. Because nobody seems to be able to give me an answer as to when this fire hydrant is going to show up on the side of my house. So I figured I would come here this evening and express my concerns because it is a concern and it's dangerous. Because it is the fire hydrant that is surrounded by a number of houses on my block. Also, while you're discussing, uh, street paving, Union Terrace is a disaster. I've fallen on many occasions from the unsteadiness in the street. Um, I don't know if anybody else has complained, but unfortunately my husband suffered a stroke earlier in March, at the end of March. It's very difficult for him to walk on the streets, very difficult for him to walk, period. And now I have to worry about this street. So also maybe you can add Union Terrace or at least have somebody come and look. Even if they fill in something, but it's really, really getting all broken up over there. And thank you for your time and good luck to all of you.
Thank you. I can't, um, I can't physically come bring you a, uh, fire hydrant, but what I do say to everybody is at least we're here to be. At least we're, we're giving updates. You deserve an update and we'll hold you to that information. Anybody else? Man in the back?
Hi, Rudy Charles, four one Naples Avenue. I would like to bring to the council the attention that the bridge on Mill Street for the entrance to the senior building should be made bigger so two cars can't enter at the same time. One going in and one coming out. At times, cars have to wait on Mill Street to enter and wait in the parking lot to leave. Also, when the bus trips to a little city or a half, the bus just about fits on the bridge. Sometimes making a turn onto the bridge is very hard. Now that the construction is being done on Franklin Avenue and Mill Street, the entrance is harder at times. I believe the township looking to this matter to make the bridge a little bigger. Thank you.
Mr. Frank Tantoni?
You'll be next, Sean.
I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Tucci for putting the streeting courts back on Washington Avenue. As clean community coordinator, I purchased them in nineteen eighty-eight and then after I got out of office, they weren't used except to be what we heard as chariot races down the DPW. So let's see how long it lasts. Hopefully you'll keep, uh, Washington area clean this street there. Uh, your recreation committee advisory committee members made some good, good presentation. I had many items that they recommended to council were good for the citizens and the children. They received no response. But we've got four council members who've been sitting up there for twelve years. So the question then, why weren't these good proposals by your advisory committee acted on? And I think before you've got an answer for that. Also, the, um, uh, mayor and council, I've been for over twenty, twenty-five years. I'm young in the summer. Other towns do it and in fact, Mr. Tucci's town does it. This is the time of year you seal the cracks in our streets. It's preventive maintenance. But in the winter, the water gets in a freeze and opens up our streets. Mr. Tucci, a couple of years he's been here, every time I bring it up, he's a nice guy. He suggests, we'll do it. It's never done. This is the time to do it when it's eighty, ninety degrees. That car gets in there and really sees it. Uh, so maybe you can put some pressure out to actually get it done before September. And the good, this is the time to do it. Extends the life of these streets for many years. It, it, it still needs to. And, um, I hope, you're gonna livestream this, but I hope you folks can finally get the microphones to work. So people in the ordinance and our home doors. I mean, you heard the night people yelling, I can't hear, uh, right in the ordinance. And it's not only you, it's our Board of Education members, educators don't know how to use the microphones. And also, please, our planning and zoning board are horrendous. None of them know how to use a mic. Some of them are very, uh, short spoken. We can't hear anything. And the, um, uh, Mayor Melon, to you, uh, I'm the registered agent of the Concerned Citizens in Belville. I can tell you we have nothing to do with those flyers sent out. But if you find out who it is, believe me, we'll file lawsuits against us. It wasn't any of our members. Uh, and I'm registered in Trenton as that. Uh, we were formed in nineteen eighty-six. We don't do things like that. So I hope you pursue it. I hope you find out who did that, who understand. Thank you.
Man in the back? I'm sorry, I promised John. John, yes?
John, two show fifty-three, Mount Pleasant. Rory and I spoke about this before. The old auto bond of whatever society, whatever you know, transport drive, that's what I know it as. Is there a way that we can get those people that live there to park in their parking lot and pay for their parking, whatever they gotta do? Because I'm two blocks away and they're ta- constantly coming down. I know it's a free street and anybody can park where they want. They park on the corners, they park in front of the water hives, they park in driveways. So my suggestion to all my neighbors, because I walk around and they know, they say, what do we do now? I said, everybody park your cars on the street to keep them from taking the parking spots. It's gonna, there's gonna be a war and there's gonna be a fight. We've gotta talk to those people that own that property. Get those people to start paying for parking, park in their lots. Instead of just going wherever they want, leaving cars for a week. We have cars, cars that are basically, sure, they're sitting there for a week until they have to move from one side to the other. You just keep moving back and forth. This is, so everybody in the neighborhood get a man. There's gonna be a fight, there's gonna be a war. But my other question is, can we get people that live in there on those streets parking permits?
Resident parking.
Resident parking versus, uh, so they can't keep coming down and taking all the spots off. I told everybody in my next, just everybody park by the street, don't use driveways. Just park by the street to keep them from coming down. We've gotta do something about it because there's gonna be a fight. And there's always parking, chief, there's parking all over the front of water hives, on driveways. I tell them, I said, everybody, call the cops. I said, what can I tell you? That would...
Call the cops, they get tickets?
Yeah. I wish they'd get towed.
Oh, it's fucking hard in the night.
John, what, John, what they're doing is, uh, um, they are parking there, but, uh, they're renovating that whole complex. And they are paying for parking there. So it's gonna be a very difficult situation. Uh, Councilman Cazarelli, you know, because you're part of that one, too.
Yeah, they, what they did was the owners started charging separately for parking.
Yeah.
So that pushed a lot of people not to pay for parking.
Absolutely.
They went to the street.
Then you should put it in the rents. Make them pay for it in the rents and they stay in there. Because two, same people, come two or three cars and they park all over the streets. So, and all the residents start there because some people have drivers, some don't, they don't have to. And they're hard trying to find places to park them. So, I decide, I, my wife would walk those streets and I talked to everybody else who's, I know everybody. And they're all asking me, what can we do about this problem? I says, well, we could all get together, we could put a petition together, I guess.
Yeah, I think what you have to do is the renovation is right now being done. And the, I, I, I understand that some of the rents are gonna be from fourteen hundred to sixteen, seventeen hundred, okay? So we have to wait to see what is going to transpire here.
Also, they also come out with their dogs. They're letting go all over the place.
I, I do want to see that.
I'm, I'm a concrete pro- I have a...
I think we're gonna have to wait until the renovation is done. That's what they're working on right now.
That's a new order now, right?
Yes, yes.
They are, we're better than the old owners.
Let's hope so.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Bruce. Man in the back?
Yes. Hi, Laura Moss, Eight Fairview Place. Um, it's another street that we do. Uh, according to our oldest native honored lot, our street, the south end of Fairview to the dead end, hasn't been paving over fifty years. Uh, the potholes are filled in frequently when I call, our other neighbors call. They come, they fill them and then half, half of the, it's done, piecemeal. And once the street cleaners come around, they break it up. The winter ice breaks it right up again. Uh, we have a project fee, uh, gentleman on our block, whose only means of accessibility is through a tucker type of, uh, wheelchair. Several times, thankfully I was home, a couple other neighbors are home, you were able to get him, um, dislodged from one of the potholes. Um, it's just falling on deaf ears through the years. Please consider paving our street. Um, and the other thing also I just want to add, Hendrick's Field Golf Course is our front yard. Our home states Hendrick's Field. I have spent many, many years trying to get them to come and maintain their property. The weeds are growing out of control. There are trees now on Hendrick's Field, parked property are so old, every storm that comes along, a big windstorm, a tree falls. It's happened three times so far since I've been living there since nineteen eighty-seven. Brings down the power lines, the fence, the last storm happened this past May fifteenth. The fence is still, it looks like a war zone between the way the street looks and the fencing and the overgrown weeds. They just don't maintain the property. I've spoken to Mr. Chris, the director of the golf course, Mr. Arleo, he's the new director. Mr. Dan Salvanti, I get, yes, 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 war. I've heard several times, you're not a priority. Now, because we're a dead end street and we're going twelve homes on our end, that's why we're not a priority. But Bellevue Avenue, Franklin Avenue, they maintain the property facing those areas. Our street, we're like, well, you're not a priority. And like I told Mr. Gilver, my mom always said, I'm fit to be tied when, you know, something was up to here. And myself and our neighbors, which are many elderly people now, I mean, they, they say, Larry, you're crazy, give up, nothing ever gets done. But I, I have hope in you and I'm optimistic, and I'm hoping between you and maybe somebody else on the council has some cold contacts with Essex County, because our emails, our phone calls, not helping.
As, as you're aware, usually the squeaky wheel gets the oil.
I've been squeaking so many years.
In fact, this is a, in fact, this is a public hearing, and you're here to express that now, at least we're on notice, and we're aware of it. And we, as I said before, we can at least give you answers.
Anthony Savella, forty Crescent Terrace. Uh, first, good news, the new website's fantastic, easy to use, looks great. I was trying to, we were talking about cultural things. In the whole entire Essex County park system, every park has a concert or something all summer long. Bellevue Park has never got nothing. For some reason, the old regime got no respect from the county. Could have been that the old congressman liked to make names out of Joe Day on his phone, I don't know. But never got respect, never. Then she brought up that, the golf course, that, that's a disaster, disaster. Garden Avenue, disaster. Girollin Street, disaster. Every one of their trees are the ones that going into the power lines. It would be so much easier, uh, first, wait, I just read in the paper, they're making three million a, a month now on keeping illegal aliens in their prison account, so, they're doing really good. And that golf course makes big cash. But they don't care, they never cared about Bellevue. There's gotta be a reason, somebody up here knows why, they never cared about Bellevue. Because you would never see this in Nutley, you wouldn't see it anywhere else. So why are we the only park that doesn't have a cultural thing? They put the, they throw a band in Brookside Park. That's not, they don't even have parking in Bloomfield at Brookside Park. And then throw in the fields over there. Those fields should have been renovated twenty years ago. The walking paths are disaster. I mean, Bellevue Park is the worst of all the parks. And I think Joe did a great job with the parks. I think the parks are great, better than they have in a long time. But Bellevue Park, they threw that big playground out, but that was it. And as far as in with the parking, I don't understand, because in the back by the reservoir, there's gotta be two hundred spots back there. And they can't be paying for them.
What do they wanna pay for?
How do they pay for it? They're not numbered and there's no stickers. They're not numbered or there's no stickers, you know, so how are people paying? I don't get it. As far as renovations, I haven't seen anything. Are they renovating each apartment, like one at a time?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I, I, I hope, believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, I mean, it has gotten better over the years, with your help, I must say. I remember when they had the steel staircase in the back that were falling down, so, you know. Like, my house is right against the back of there, so a good owner, higher rents, maybe I'll get what I paid for my house back. But anyway, like I said, somebody's gotta get to the county, because they don't care. They don't care what happens in Bellevue. It's kinda like the state and Route twenty-one, Main Street. And that's a problem for Nutley too. But they got a little privacy fence further down than we got, but they actually have apartments here, but. It's so overgrown that you, it, it's halfway into the street. The state never does anything, the county don't do anything, the city of Newark doesn't do anything. With the reservoir, that's also behind me. Drive down Girollin, look at the fence line, it's a mess, it's a disaster. It's like, no respect, we, it's, we're like Rodney Dangerfield. We get no respect, none. That's gotta stop. We gotta get to the right people somehow. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. I will tell you the same thing that I, I could have expressed to Mr. Frantoni before. I ask that you judge us, this governing body, on today's vote, not on the past. Uh, I'm pretty committed to having strong relationships at all levels of government. I'm registered as an independent, this board is a nonpartisan board. Uh, so I plan on having good relationships, and we currently do enjoy a decent relationship with Newark uh, and onward up to even the governor's office. And that does not reflect endorsement. Uh, just because they may be here in Bellevue, we may take pictures with them if they're at our events, doesn't mean it's endorsement. It just means that we want a good working relationship with all levels of government. One of the first meetings I took after July first was with our freeholder who had never been developed before. He's the freeholder, uh, Carlos Primeros, he represents Bellevue. He had never been developed before. Uh, that was the first meeting, one of the first meetings I took the day after, uh, the election. So we're committed to that, and it's, it's a relationship, and we plan on having a good relationship. And these are issues that we can definitely bring forward to them. I just ask that you give us, this governing body, a chance, and today going forward, and don't hold us accountable for
Absolutely.
any sins of any prior administration.
The freeholder, he's a, what, a townie councilman, basically, right?
Exactly. Anybody else? Mayor?
Paige Rivera, eighty, Rossmore Place. Um, as a parent and a taxpayer in Bellevue, I would really love to see some more performing arts programs for our youth in our town. Um, I know for myself, I pay a lot of money to other towns for my kids to participate, which I think is kind of money wasted, whereas if we had that program, those programs in Bellevue, we could kind of help out the town and kind of keep it in Bellevue.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We talked about that earlier. Mr. Madden?
Jeff Mattingly, fifty-six Walnut. I'd like to begin by congratulating the new members of the council, congratulations on your win. And in, in that atmosphere of new blood on the council, I'd like to go back to things that I, I have brought up in years past, like Franklin Avenue. Franklin Avenue has a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign right in front of the chandelier. I mean, you're basically looking north on Franklin, and it says thirty-five miles an hour. They did finally? All right, well, what we need is when you're approaching Continental, that's wonderful. How many people, really? I mean, it was insane. And the, the pressure in that intersection now is tremendous with the way traffic is today. So what we need is a reduction of the two lanes to one before we get to Continental, and you start to see the traffic slow down and not become, uh, you know, a race, race course, you know, to get around people on that intersection, and allow that to go. Also, so that, that's a wonderful thing, and maybe this council can band together and, you know, have file something with the county asking that they reconsider the traffic pattern. And, you know, the fact that people at the, uh, at Essex Park park in that area twenty, thirty cars on a weekend, every weekend, that are crossing that street, that street needs to be slowed down. So, and then also, the, Mr. Frantoni is right, street sealing has to occur this time of year. Most of our roads are asphalt over concrete. Or those seams are going to open up, and that expansion is going to get water in it in the winter, freeze, bust it open, and then big pieces of, of asphalt come out. Garden Avenue Steve, what was that done, four years ago, three, four? That was like one point three million dollars with taking those trees down in order to, it was a major, now, all those are starting to open up big time, and you're getting chunks coming out in between the road, and it's gonna just get worse. And all those roads in that same timeframe that are, they're, you know, they need to be sealed just to maintain, ma- maintain. You, you might get an additional four, five years out of a road if it's properly maintained. So to seal that up and utilize that, we can get in front of some of this plot of, uh, so it's, it's intelligent, you know, and, and management. And the county needs to be brought on board, and we need to get our pressure from our council with however you can come together in resolution, pass it, and bring it to the county, and see if we can do this. Make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madden.
Eleanor Gordon, Elcheston Street, Bellevue. I just wanna make Mr. Schwellig a home feeling better about Bellevue Park, because a new walking path will be done in August. Right now, they're fixing up, they put mugs down, and our parks are still from day one day.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, Jose Vergara, two-two-sixteenth Street, this is my white tower. Um, uh, my only complaint is, uh, is speed on my street. People come out of Route twenty-one, I live between Girollin and Homer Street. People come out of Route twenty-one, they still think they're on Route twenty-one, whether going north or south on Stevens Street. I complained about this numerous times to the police department. They gracefully dropped off the radar detector and put it out there. Uh, these people obviously know there's nothing behind their bugger radar detector, there's no police force. Is there anything you can do about that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read them, I'll address them. Um, I'll tell you that we probably during the campaign, my running mates and I, we probably ranked six thousand doorbells collectively. And that was probably the biggest complaint that we heard of speed. Um, you have to understand that when these roads were designed to be straightaways like they are now, it was a different time. Uh, modern planning, uh, you go to these suburban towns and you see winding roads, and that's specific to avoid speed. Uh, we can do temporary fixes, we can put a radar down there, put a traffic alarm, so that we can write tickets for three days. On the fourth day, the fifth day, it's not. Um, everybody wants speed bumps, I can't tell you how many people wanted speed bumps. Everybody wants speed bumps. The problem with speed bumps is then, you may very well be back here in the wintertime saying that we're not effectively plowing your street. You can't plow with speed bumps. The next option will be the rumble strips. Uh, after a while, most people don't even acknowledge them, they just go right through them, and it becomes an irritant to any of the neighbors that have to constantly hear that sound for that long. Um, it's a problem, there's no doubt about that, and I've had a couple conversations with Mayor Chief about that. You are probably the hundredth person that's complained about it. We're gonna work on some kind of a solution, whether that's temporarily putting the, the rumble strips. Also, with the rumble strips is, the older ones that I remember, uh, and Mr. Frantoni can help you out with this, they, the plows used to actually dig them up, and they went by, so.
As I said, I mean, I don't know how to address this, so I'm just bringing the team attention, I mean, it's like you're saying, a lot of people.
It's something that's been thought about.
And it's difficult across the street, we have two other towns, there's one across the street, and these cars are coming down, they don't care, they don't stop. Another issue is this street is very narrow, it's a two-way, so there's no roof on these cars.
We can definitely look at traffic type, I'll tell you that I live on Burmese Road. Uh, and I initially thought that was a nice quiet residential street, that street's a highway. Uh, but to cut through, right, right to Nutley, right to Route three, if you really wanna take it down, it's a highway. So the, the complaint is valid, uh, I've discussed it with the police team. We looked at at least, I know Council Dracianno even mentioned in September, putting the, uh, those little miniature icons in, uh, in the streets by the schools, with the flag, is anything to let people know to slow down. It's, it's a valid concern, no doubt about that, and we're, we're gonna be thinking about it.
We're gonna take your free time.
Tony, Mary Higgins, one forty-eight Brighton Avenue. Um, Mayor, I believe you filed a lawsuit against authorities who sent out mailings during their election campaign. On this flyer, it states that, um, you voted in Bellevue multiple times while living in Windsor. It's very simple to solve this, for your credibility. If you truly lived in Bellevue during this time, you know, could you just provide proof such as a driver's license or tax return? You know, to solve this problem? Is that be possible?
It's not a conversation, I'll, I'll wait till you're done with your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, the second concern I have is, um, concerning the town website. Uh, Mr. Mayor, since you received thirty-five thousand dollar website contract from the Board of Education in July of twenty thirteen, you never delivered any aspect of a new website within ten months before May twenty-fourteen. In May twenty-fourteen, the state appointed a school district monitor who put an immediate stop to your association with the Board of Education. How is it possible that you were able to construct a new township website in just six weeks after the May election this year, when you couldn't produce anything during the ten months between July twenty thirteen to May twenty-fourteen? The new website is missing the past three years of the township budget, which is required by the state of New Jersey. Can you answer the question?
It's not a conversation, you're allowed to speak in five minutes.
Why not?
It's not a back and forth conversation.
So you're refusing to answer the question? Thank you.
Hi, I'm on the first, one thirty-two Franklin Street. As Mr. Madden said before, congratulations to the new council and Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, going forward, we can all work together to make this town a better place. And you've been making great strides with the websites, and I've been asking the previous council for years about, you know, broadcasting the, the meetings. And it was always, oh, you know, no answers. So I commend you for that, I commend you for the pictures and all the plans that you've already started. My first question tonight is, what is the status of the facility, the firehouse? I've been hearing many different things. I've been hearing it's in the chief's hands. I've been hearing that it's not gonna be manned, I've been hearing that it's waiting on this, I've been hearing that it's waiting on that. I've been yelling at this previous council for, what, four years now, gentlemen, ladies? Quite roughly, four years, and believe me, I can yell, ask them. Um, just wanted to know what the status of what that is.
All right, all right, just put, conclude your comments and then we'll.
Sure, sure, sure. Uh, that's number one. Number two, I asked the previous council to see if what we can do about on Franklin, people cutting across to turn onto Belmont, Franklin Street, excuse me, Franklin Street. Um, because people keep cutting over the line. You know, I asked if the camera could be put there, I was told it's illegal, which I still don't believe. Um, I say if you give Joe D. enough credit, if you ask him to put his name on something, he'll put his name on something. That's number two. Uh, and not to start off this conversation on a bad note, that's what it means, but is the current, is the lawsuit that you had against the town still in progress, or can you not speak about that? That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not speaking, obviously, it's a matter of open litigation.
Okay.
I will ask the township manager if you can just fill him in a little bit on the fire. I have not toured the firehouse, I've heard it's absolutely beautiful.
Oh, lovely.
Uh, but I have not toured it, uh, Mr.?
Yes, I, I actually walked through the firehouse to do the final inspection, uh, last Thursday. It is absolutely magnificent.
I know.
It's, it's, it looks like a, a luxury apartment, as opposed to a firehouse. Uh, it came out tremendously, they did a great job, the workmanship was excellent. Uh, we just need to coordinate with the new mayor and council, um, a date to have a dedication ceremony. All right, and the chief is working on a strategy to actually stamp the firehouse.
Can we invite the chief to the next meeting?
You have to ask the mayor that question.
Please, please, sorry.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Amber Cruz, that, one twenty-six Academy Street. My comment is two-fold. First, my concern is, um, the enforcement of alternate signs of street parking for street cleaning. I've called many times, everything's a lie of time, and said, yeah, like, hey, cars still park out there, whatever. I'll just send somebody, we'll send somebody. Nobody ever comes in the core street cleaner, either does zigzag, or just goes straight down Academy, and it's not damn clean. They park all the way into the crosswalk. They're supposed to be, what, fifty feet from a crosswalk? They're parked right up into the crosswalk, so you have to try and nudge out Academy and try and make your turn. Even if I want to make a left, I make a right, because it should get safer, and I go all the way around. My second comment is on, this past week of the church, it's press release, had two very large coach buses parked on Academy Street, which is a residential street, it's a one-way. They're blocked in traffic. We've been having this problem for years, so our way is to document. We take pictures, we keep records, so that when we have to speak, we have documentation. My neighbor was doing such, whilst the bus driver took offense to it. There's no, uh, privacy issue on a public street, you can take pictures, cars or buses blocked in your driveway. That's all he was doing. The bus driver verbally assaulted him, then got out of the bus and mooned him, then proceeded to rip his phone out of his hand and hook with the phone. He was carting kids that day, by the way. All the kids from the church were going on a nice little treat. I don't want that man driving a kid anywhere. I don't want that man driving a kid anywhere. I did, we did get in touch with the police. I do understand that being that a cop was not there at the time of the events and did not witness it themselves, they cannot do anything? But this has been an ongoing problem. Buses, trucks, Pepsi delivery trucks. Um, uh, one day we had a full, um, zoo, literally, zoo animals parked on the street. It's a residential street, it pays good taxes, I can't find a parking space on my own street. It's getting a little crazy, and Sundays, don't leave your house, because you're not getting back on the street. I understand it's a church, I don't, I don't care if it's a Walmart or a senior student, okay, making up too much stuff, too many spaces, it parkin'. Every aspect of our street, in the bank parking lot, all of them are lower. I mean, it literally looks like there's a party going on, but none of us were invited. And the guys that were there before, they've heard me in this rant before, and I just, more patrol, traffic cops maybe, I don't know, give out tickets, maybe look there twice before, even if they're parked there, or street cleaning day, something. Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, I will tell you that, um, I'm aware of that issue. I'm not sure if it was yourself or somebody else, did reach out to me on Facebook, like it was you. Uh, and we did have some kind of dialogue between myself and the chief. I, you know, a lot of times, and I'm not, the police department and the chief can certainly speak for themselves, but a lot of times sitting here, we, we often hear residents say, we called the police and nothing happened. Uh, and that may be your opinion, or because of what you saw or did not see at that moment, uh, but we do follow up on things here, and I do know for a fact that I think, not necessarily your address, but below your address, uh, somebody else did complain about the alternate type of street parking. And I know that the next day, if I brought that to the chief's attention, I think we issued eight violations, and a day after that, we issued nine. Uh, so they do go up, they do go out, they do address it. Uh, we did see that video, and the police department did respond to that.
Yes, somebody did respond to it, and that's why I was aware of the regulations in front of the laws.
Right. So, they did respond, and I know that, I've even asked our chief, um, to maybe even foster some kind of a community meeting between the residents on that block and the church.
We tried.
Uh, we, you know, it's gotta be a dialogue, it's gotta be a conversation.
We've tried many times. It's very...
That is true, actually, spoke to the, the plan, and was verbally assaulted, uh, asked to aid him in making complaints, refused. Um, also tried to foster many meetings, as they have said, and nothing's ever come to fruition. Um, we already have a plan right now to actually go to Academy Street, and you have to come out of your houses and go there and meet in the street. That's what we're at right now. But it's always been hard in the past to get everyone together.
Just to reiterate...
We are, we are in the works of doing that.
We, we did dispatch police, and, and I don't wanna comment too much further, because it might end up being some malaction between the parties, but we did try and foster that, that, and it was refused by the, by the residents of that block.
Well, you have to...
You're not supposed to forget, quickly, go ahead.
We have tried discussing, like, representative opinions, and we've tried getting together with others as well, but every time we do, it turns into, oh, you're against us, it's all really, I don't care if you're a captain, there's a box, and there's a target, a Walmart, that's not my issue. It's, that's not the issue, but that's what they always think is the issue, or they say is our issue. I've had conversations with the, with the priests over there, and several, um, congregants, and they've offered to take Mount Rock, you know, all of a sudden, seven, six, seven, and we talk, but then they keep doing the same stuff. The light keeps getting away, buses keep getting parked, so it's like...
I tend to think that might change if you sat there with representatives of the police department, they'd carry a little more bike, I think.
Uh-huh.
Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Through the chair?
On that, and that's...
Chair, I, I remember at one point in time, can you try to turn this on without killing anybody? That, that they were gonna put a parking deck or something over there, and whatever happened to that?
Uh, all right, I'll tell you exactly what happened. The case...
Mr. Gergio, just stick your name, just whatever.
Oh, Gergio, Gergio, um, the main road street, I'm the current chairman of the zoning board, analyst, the chairman of the zoning board, and the application thing, of course. They were gonna put a dome there, and they were supposed to handle parking for both the existing church and the addition. It was supposed to be underground parking, under the dome. We put twenty-five variances, conditions, restrictions, everything on it, to resolve this whole problem. It, it was a long case, it went on for about a year. And, uh, at the end, we did a great job, I thought, and as a matter of fact, we even moved the building, so, because the building was gonna be very close to the building on the hill next to it on Academy, and we made it move that there would be at least a fifteen-foot separation, which is required by the town ordinance. And we wouldn't give them the okay to do it within fifteen feet. We made it move the building closer to the other building, so they couldn't drive through, because right now they drive through, they have like a driveway that they drive through all the way to the dead-end street on the other side. Also, they were gonna let the library use their parking lot behind the library, uh, when they were having a big function, like these server businesses and stuff like that. Everything got done, a lot of work got done on the application. Uh, the person who owns the apartment buildings on that back street there...
Rutgers.
Rutgers, yes, Rutgers. Not Rutgers, it comes up, they know.
Rutgers Court.
Court, right. Um, he, they filed a lawsuit, an appeal, and they caught a technicality in the notice that nobody caught. Something about the address and the block and lot, and all the buildings they were gonna knock down didn't match, and the whole case got thrown out. Now, since then, I've been told by the church that they're gonna come back with a whole new application. And it's supposed to be different than that application, not gonna be a dome anymore, I'm being told, but I haven't seen no plans. Uh, there was something done, that, that they were telling me, that they said that their, uh, I don't know, was their planner or their architect, told them that under the law, all they have to do is provide additional parking for the new building that they're gonna construct. I says, well, that's not gonna fly. I says, under your application that we approved, you have to provide enough parking for a current building and any new building that you build, and I don't think you'll get it passed if you don't do that with the new application also. Because otherwise, you were gonna have a lot of parking problems, which you're having now, and it would increase. So, um, they, I told them that, but we haven't done any application. Until I get an application, can't do anything.
Thank you. What? What else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Say on four, four.
Anybody else?
Need to errant eleven church terrace. Welcome to the council, and welcome, best of luck. Um, my, my only complaint, I've been living on church terraces for over thirty-five years, and for the past probably ten or so, we've had a lot of noise coming from Newark. Now, I'm just a block from Newark, so that's kinda easy when they're loud, but they must have these street parties or whatever's going on. And I have to tell you that I can go in my house, close my windows, and my window, I, it says it from Apple Party myself. Yeah, I think it's on the rolling door. Um, I don't know why, for some reason, maybe they think we're sheriffs in town, and we're kinda quiet, and I'm really happy, so I hate to say it, but, um, what are my options? I was told when I called the police that there's nothing they can do because it's not their jurisdiction, but aren't there noise ordinances or something that they have to... I mean, we're the knights paying all the taxes that we pay, just to have a sit on my own property and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we can look into it, uh, again, it's not felt with jurisdiction, but maybe we could always call up Newark and try and discuss them. I'm quite certain they probably prioritize their, their responses, and I'm not quite sure if they would ever get to a noise complaint in time for, that would satisfy you, uh, but we could probably, have the police department give us an answer. Anybody else? Motion closed?
Motion closed.
Motion made second, no, sorry, sir. Just knock it in there.
I'm from Sevado, uh, for the Womish Society Church of God, located up in ninety-three Washington Avenue. Uh, today is, we've just entered a new production, um, as well as a new invitation. Um, what we feel after hearing the concerns of the town, there are certain events and activities that the church participated, that we'd like to look at my hand and help out. Um, first, I would like to thank the council and everyone in attendance, uh, this evening, for allowing us to speak here. Uh, the Womish Society Church of God is a non-denominational church with two-point-seven registered members and in seventy thousand locations in a hundred and seventy-five, uh, different countries in the world. Uh, the church has been recognized by the US government, uh, we received the president's call to services in the year two thousand and eleven, and consecutive weeks in the year two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. After the events of Hurricane Sandy, uh, we were recommended to get a certification to be first responders, emergency first responders, and we did so. They, what hit several weeks, uh, took about twelve hours, or twelve hundred members on the East Coast, to be certified by FEMA. And now we're certified first responders for any kind of, in emergency activities. Um, in the events of Hurricane Maria, our churches in New Jersey and New York gathered about twenty-five thousand pounds of non-viral items, uh, toiletries, and first aid, uh, equipment used for hospital. Um, however, locally, in Belleville, we are planning our second Heroes Festival. Um, we had one in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, this day just as in two thousand and sixteen, is dedicated to the heroes that we consider to be the Belleville Police Department and Belleville Fire Department. Uh, they have been invited to the church for appreciation barbecue. Uh, we would also like to extend this invitation to the mayor and also to the council, uh, neighbors, friends, and family, anyone who'd like to attend. It's, uh, this Sunday, July twenty-second, uh, May three hundred and ninety-three, Washington Avenue, of the church, and everyone is welcome to attend. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Motion closed?
Second.
Motion made second, per call of all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Senya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Dooliver?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Uh, I pulled off a resolution number four, just wanna put on a, uh, individual, motion made...
Motion group.
Motion made second, per call of all.
Detective member Cazarelli?
Yes.
Dependent?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Dooliver?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Uh, I pulled off a resolution number four, just wanna put on a, uh, individual, motion made...
Motion group.
Motion made second, per call of all.
Detective member Cazarelli?
Yes.
Dependent?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Dooliver?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Take number four. Resolution five, oh, sorry, no.
Three.
Oh, sorry, three before, that's all right. Um, resolution three is the...
Temporary budget.
Uh...
Do the motion move?
Uh, first, we need to stop.
Okay.
So, this, uh, this is a temporary budget, this basically keeps funding the township going forward. While we still currently don't have a, a formal budget approved by the state for two thousand and eighteen, this emergency resolution basically allows us to think happens. Uh, because we're spending taxpayer money, it's a little different with a vote, requires five votes on this. This is something that we, not only myself, but the newly-left councilmembers are kind of in hurry, um, and obligated for a short period of time, I think, to move this forward so we can pay bills. I do not want, uh, I don't think it's an endorsement of a budget that's pending, but if it's not approved by five votes, we can't pay bills, and we can't pay employees, and uh, we kinda have to do that. Uh, so by no means, uh, signifies endorsement of a budget. Uh, I don't intend on doing this for a long time. I expect the state to actually okay our budget in the very near future, so we can actually strike the two thousand and eighteen budget and quickly move on to the two thousand and nineteen budget. Uh, so again, just because we're approving a temporary emergency budget, in my opinion, it doesn't signify endorsement of the current budget that's pending, even though we inherited already half-smack. Uh, just wanna put that out there. So, with that said, can we get a motion to move?
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion made a second, per call of all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Dependent?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Dooliver?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Uh, I mean, uh, the motion to go into new business?
Motion to go into new business, second.
Motion made a second, per call of all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Dependent?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Dooliver?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. And the others to new business.
Mayor, I have one idea that I would bring up on the new business. On, uh, on June eleventh, um, I received a letter from the LIU union, and it was basically a letter of objection, uh, based upon the action that was taken at the June four meeting concerning the memorandum of agreement with the FNBA and the, uh, the FOA. And basically, uh, they're objecting, uh, to the passage of that. And then on, uh, June nineteenth, I received a letter of objection from the OCU union, which details our BNBA, uh, members, both white, which are clericals, and blue, which are the DPW workers, uh, basi- basically objecting to the same thing, and by the tone of the letter, uh, threatening to pursue legal action, uh, should this action, uh, continue to go forward. I'd just like to give everyone a little, uh, background on this. On the fourth, at about eleven-thirty, I was handed a copy of the memorandum of agreement, which was not negotiated by me. Um, it was negotiated outside...
Excuse me, institution? Institution? Can I just get an opinion from the town attorney, is this, we're good for holocaust?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, the contract...
It's all public information.
Yeah, the, the, uh, resolution's already been signed and...
Right, yeah, it was passed, it was signed, and...
Absolutely.
Uh, so, basically, uh, what we're being threatened with are three lawsuits, uh, from some of our other unions, uh, relative to that. Um, I, I was told at the time, uh, by the then-town attorney that we could always amend that, uh, that agreement, uh, but as we all know, you can only amend that agreement if both parties agree to that. Um, I have drafted, if you're, uh, if you're so inclined, a resolution rescinding that, all right, for several reasons. Number one, because it was done outside of normal channels and outside of the, the fourth act as prescribed, or the title forty. Uh, it, there was no evaluation of the financial impact on the township, not only now, but looking forward, nor was there any review or analysis of what the impact would be from the other market, because basically, what occurred, if this was to, to stay in place, is you're creating two different classes of employees, all right? And they are also alleging that we did not, we did, we illustrated, and myself in particular, negotiate in good faith, all right? So, if, if, if it pleases the mayor and council, um, I put together a, a, a resolution, all right, to rescind that action, and to refer it to labor council for renewal and analysis, and to, to find out what the financial impact would be on the township, if that's okay with the town attorney.
The, the, if I may, the budget that's been in, in now, does that have any of these additional numbers of costs?
No, it does not. It does not because the negotiations were not concluded. What it did include was some retroactive pay for the BNB A members and for the LIU members for 2017. And what's all, what is included in that 2018 budget is also the increases for 2018 for those same three bargaining units.
It can, it can be...
I was, I was at that meeting. I was in the front row, we were not seated yet. So we had no role or no involvement in that meeting, just, we were in the executive session and we heard it, but... I mean, is this...
There normally, there was, there was a bit of confusion. Things were moving very quickly. That action ran contrary to what was discussed in private session, all right, where all of this was outlined. So I believe it was a miscommunication on the vote, all right, that not, maybe folks thought they were voting for something else that did not actually come out the way they wanted.
We're not saying no, we're just evaluating in a way that the whole receivers and it should be...
My recommendation is the same recommendation that I made in private session, to refer it to labor council, all right, for an analysis and impact. And then at that point in time, I'll present same to the mayor and council and then we can move forward in any way we desire.
Is this...
I have probably if it's okay to distribute your...
Just wanted to spark the town attorney for a moment.
Yes. The action can be rescinded. Obviously, in looking at those letters that Mr. Tucci received from the prior, from the other unions who have already completed their, their negotiations and their contracts are in place, it does create, it could create a problem going forward with all the other unions. So he had drafted a resolution, which I just read while he was speaking, which basically rescinds the prior action, will rescind the contract. And this resolution specifically says that it would be referred to labor council for review and analysis and recommendation.
Which is not the normal course, course of action either.
Which would have been Mr. Tucci's, since under the Faulkner Act, he's the one who negotiates, that would have negotiated that contract. He did not and didn't have the opportunity to review, to review it with labor council and review it in, to compare it to how it's going to affect the budget and the future of Belleville. And so there's, there's nothing, as a mayor and council, you can rescind it and then the negotiation can continue. And it may, it may end up the same way or something different, but can't know that until the negotiation and analysis is properly done.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody? Does it have to be written to the record or how does that...
Well, if it's your pleasure, all right, to have what's prescribed in that go forward, then we need a motion to...
Let's at least read it to the record so we know what we're...
I have a copy, so do you want to read it?
I just handed out copies for everyone.
And then it could be memorialized in a formal resolution by the council. Be read into record and then it can be memorialized.
Whereas the township council, whereas the township council of township of Belleville voted to include the memorandum of agreement on June 4th, 2018 concerning some bargaining units and that whereas said agreements were negotiated outside the normal process and that whereas local local 32 represented BNB A, blue and white, along with local 1412 and the owner, have submitted formal objection letters to the memorandum of understanding approved on June 4th, 2018 related to the fire, bargaining units, and the above. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and township council hereby rescind resolution 27 and 28 passed on June 4th, 2018 and that it, and that the memorandum of understanding concerning terms and conditions of employment of employees represented by the Belleville FNB A local 29 and FOA local 29 effective January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2020, executed under said resolution, be hereby resolved and the memorandum of understanding referred to here under or hereby referred to the township labor council for review and analysis and recommendation. So I make a motion to move it?
I second the motion.
Motion made in second, per call roll.
Councilmember Cosarrelli?
Yes.
Dependent?
abstain.
Graziano?
abstain.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlumber?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Take number four. Motion to adjourn.
I have one more thing there. Uh, just real quick, I've lost a, a good, a good woman about two weeks ago, Joan Gabriel, was a district leader. She was involved in various committees and organizations. In the last few years of her life, she was homebound, but that didn't stop her from participating. I just want to recognize that we lost her and I know she has some ways to say better also.
Yeah, I mean, what most people don't know, she was housebound, but never stopped working for the town. On behalf of Joan, her family and friends, I want to thank Colleen Britton, the health department team, especially the visiting nurses. Many people don't realize that we have a visiting nurse service and these women are phenomenal. And it's only through that that I believe Joan had a more livable life. I also want to thank the police department, fire department for taking such great care of her, especially when she fell and when she had to go to the hospital. Just so you guys know, she would always ask me when you guys are going to do a calendar.